...problem with the policy that you feel, what part of that restricts what people can stay, say, is it the, where, where in the policy, what are you, where in the policy specifically do you take issue?
Well, basically, what it calls for, we cannot, they can't mention anyone by name. We have to address the board only as a board, okay? We can, we can have to address the administration only as the administration.
Doesn't say that, right? Where does it say that? It says speakers shall address the entire board as a whole, not individual board members.
I see, yeah, not individuals.
Okay.
There you go, that's what I'm talking about. If they wanted to do that individual, this thing for me is a red flag, correct? That's what I'm saying. This is a red flag. I don't think what we're doing here, this policy, we can make policy, policy's not law. And if policy infringes on free, uh, free, uh, free speech, then we, then it's actually illegal policy.
So do you also take issue with shall remain polite and respectful as a policy?
Let's be polite, you know, obviously, I don't.
I'd like to jump in if I could, Madam President. I, I think that the real significant change that was made, or not change, but clarification that we made in this policy was that board members are not free to respond and discuss topics that individual speakers may bring before us because they are not on the agenda. And so, uh, we can't have a con, a, a discussion and decision-making about items that are not, that the public has not been made aware of ahead of time. That's really the significant change. And I've got no problems with that because, you know, we take and we listen to what people say, and they often become, by our own suggestions, agenda items the next month, just like that, just like the transportation issue. Uh, so, really, these meetings go a long time. We could get really bogged down in discussing an item that was on somebody's mind and is really quite emotional, but it's not on our agenda. We could, we could be in the trenches for an hour on things like that. So, I think it's practical, and, and in fact, it really doesn't curtail the process, it's just a, a different process than.
You shouldn't be discussing things that aren't on the current agenda or may come up on future agendas.
Right. Mark, that to me is.
That's where you limit freedom of speech. When somebody gets up and wants to talk about something and we enter into a conversation with them, and then somebody reads about it in the paper the next week and says, "Well, what the heck, I wanted to be part of that conversation and you guys didn't allow me. You took away my freedom of speech."
Correct, Mark.
By not saying that we were going to discuss this and because I had something to say about it.
That's correct, Mark, and that is the biggest change, the clarification of that. So, so we all understood that more clearly than, than we did before.
And the other side of, the other side of my issue with this policy is, is that, I don't know, if you're asking for any policy or if the board is willing to give you that, what I call dictatorial rights, when you've said that you can interfere, you can interrupt any conversation, anytime, for any reason. And I think we all have to remind ourselves that, that board president is no more powerful than any one of us sitting here. We all have equal powers. So why should you have the, to interrupt any conversation you want? The speaker's already limited to four minutes, or three minutes, so. I, I, I strongly disagree with that. But if you're gonna, what's that?
The board president isn't, and it's true for any village board, town board, county board, the president runs the meeting. And that is, they, they have to give equal time to all of the members of whatever commission or whatever it is. So they have a right to end a conversation and continue the meeting on. It is not dictatorial powers, it is basically managing the meeting. You can't just then go on and on about a subject. We have other agenda items we have to get to. So, your example of dictatorial powers, I take offense to, that's not what it is. This is, uh, this is parliamentary.
Well, I apologize if I use such strong words.
It's parliamentary procedure, and it's Robert rules of order, and as a board member, then be more careful on what you're using for wording in a policy form.
I, I think we've reached that point. We've discussed what this policy is about, we've discussed why we clarified it, we've had our opinions, and I think it is time to recommend this policy and the other one to the board for second reading.
I would just suggest go back and read from the, when was it, what meeting? August 24th Policy Committee Meeting packet, which has the original policy, 187 in it, and what you're complaining the most about being in there and restricting rights is word for word out of the old policy.
It was never checked.
It was never changed. It was there to start with. So I would just suggest go back and read the old policy, because it's there too.
Okay, and, and I will, I'll do that, okay? And then I suggest you do some research on fact that public comment sessions all over at different levels of government are being challenged, that if we have the public comment session, people are saying that you can't restrict what they want to say, okay? That's my red flag, okay?
Dan, we're, we're not restricting what? The public can say those. We're restricting that we're not going to engage in a conversation in order to not violate open meetings laws.
Okay, so. Oh, I move that we accept policy 187 and 345.5 for second reading. Is that what I was supposed to say?
Yes.
One second.
Any further discussion?
We need a second.
Mark. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We have a couple policies on here for the first reading. The first one is 350 youth options program, post-secondary enrollment programs. We went through this one and we did not have any changes on this one. It looks like the policy was great as it was. Um, the next one is 351 summer school programs. We just deleted some language that the board needs to approve summer school programs because that's not how it currently is, and we just added that hours spent in summer school programs don't count toward the minimum hours of instruction required by the law. Item number 361, selection of instructional materials. This one we had a, several more changes. The language was really outdated because the policy was last dated in 1990, so basically it was just the language was updated, no real changes in the policy. And item 361, rule selection guidelines, it, it was kind of the same thing, it was outdated policy, so we just didn't make any real changes, just some language changes to bring it up to date. Were there any questions on any of those policies?
Motion, move those to second reading.
That's good.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration and action of School Forest Buildings and Grounds Committee.
We had a meeting last week and, um, just want to give you a quick rundown. We had an Eagle Scout Bryce Fear approach us about doing a project so that he can earn his Eagle Scout status, like do a playground activity called Gaga Ball. We advised him that he would look, that we would look into it, and we directed Mr. Wormick to research any liability issues. Bryce is going to come back, he's going to look at costs and possible sponsorship before he comes back to the building and grounds. It was something I had not heard of before, this very, very interesting presentation. We did a lot of discussing of middle school HVAC issues. After finally getting a report from affiliate engineers concerning moisture and mold, AEI came, two trips to this building right here and installed recording devices. The building was found to be very solid construction, no leaks or moisture apparent, but lacking insulation and vapor barriers. The existing HVAC is 26 years old, and we will have to continue to repair as needed. Some units have been replaced by larger than necessary units, and they do not run long enough to be effectively removing moisture from inside the school. Of the four different scenarios, the one offered that was least expensive is to continue to replace equipment as needed and do so with the equipment that is sized properly, and that's going to take a little bit of engineering. In the meantime, we recommended that we address the controls, be they digital or pneumatic, to better balance our HVAC as needed. The penthouses are in need of cleaning, and I think Deb is going to talk about that because that was presented to us as far as the budget meeting. Rick Ferguson reported to us on the status of cleaning the district. It appears to me he's having some trouble with turnover and some non-job-related injuries amongst his staff, and as far as right now, I'm not sure that he's fully staffed, but he says he's getting things taken care of. Mr. Cry reported to us about issues with the campus track. Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, appears to be differences of opinion as to whether or not the asphalt subsurface will have to be taken up or not. Resurfacing and stripping could be as little as $50,000, but if the subsurface has to be taken up, we could be looking at as much as $200,000. We directed Mr. Cry to continue the conversation with a number of companies and try to get a consensus of what we are looking at on this.
Report.
Uh, Stroh, can I add to that?
Absolutely.
I think one of the things that, that with the controls and the heating and cooling is that, that's kind of our, kind of recommended short-term or ongoing solution to some of the problems, but, uh, and hopefully as part of this larger planning process, we identify a more holistic approach to dealing with the heating and cooling in this building. It's just the, budgetarily, it's the most reasonable solution that we have, but we really need to have a bigger look at facilities.
We can't hope that maybe increasing enrollment in this building and air exchange and stuff like that is going to solve our problems, but we'll see.
Thank you, Mark. Item seven, consideration and action on budget committee recommendations.
Um, we met Monday night and, talk into your microphone, Deb. I know you have one.
Yeah.
Everyone.
Coach's wife.
You were here, Mark, you know everything we did, right? We met Monday night and the first item in discussion was the energy exemption agreement, which actually is another agenda item, and so I won't say much here about that in the budget committee report because it's, we, we've recommended to the full board that, that we continue with the energy exemption process for the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school years, and we'll have a discussion of that on the next agenda item. We had a discussion on, says district-wide fundraiser, and it was preliminary discussion about the idea of what the elementary school did with their bolt run or whatever they called it.
Black belt bolt.
Black belt bolt, and the idea of, of trying to eliminate all of the, we're selling this this week and we're selling that next week, and, and if your kid is in two or three activities, you might be selling two or three different fundraisers at the same time. So, it's, it's just, we just talked about it a little bit and there, this administration is working on getting some information and, and talking with staff and, and groups to see what, how we can proceed with that. The other item on our agenda is discussion of the middle school HVAC recommendation from the School Forest and Building and Grounds Committee. And we are recommending to the full board to work with CISA-10 to hire a contractor to clean the penthouses coils and ducts in the middle school heating system. We had, uh, pictures and things that we looked at, um, about the issues with that. It was, we were told it would probably run in the $20,000 to $30,000 range, which we've, the administration felt we could absorb that in our maintenance budget that's there right now. And then we're also looking into a contract with a company who was supposed to be responsible for replacing those filters in those units and, and taking care of things, and that's, that is in the process of looking in to see if they were fulfilling their contractual agreement with us and what our options are with that. So the recommendation is to go ahead and, and get this on going right away to get these penthouses cleaned up and the air systems up there cleaned.
And I think we'll hear about that in the near, in very near future.
The, the, the contract issue with the?
Well, the contract issue, our friends from CISA-10 will be presenting momentarily, are also looking at that contract and whether or not we have gotten our money's worth from that particular service provider.
So do we want to go on doing the middle school HVAC at this point? Because that's part of our budget?
I would, I would back recommendation.
So the recommendation from the budget committee was to, um, go ahead and do the cleaning that we need here at the middle school?
I would make the motion that we, um, contract with CISA-10 and get these penthouses cleaned up and, and then we'll figure out about recovering anything later.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yep, I, I guess I'm confused, why are we, if we have a contractor that under contract is supposed to clean us, why are we going to spend $20,000 to fix what he's already been contracted to do? I don't get this.
I don't think it was, they aren't responsible for the cleaning part of it, they were responsible for the upkeep and were questioning whether or not that was going on, and so.
We're actually having others, and I'm sorry for talking over you.
No, that's okay.
We're actually having others, uh, the folks that CISA-10 are reviewing the contract we have with Ellingsworth Kilgust.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't believe we've gotten our money's worth from them.
I.
And I would like to, we haven't made a final determination whether they're responsible for cleaning that or not, but I am very interested in, in ending my relationship with that organization. Very interested in ending that relationship.
Well, I think we should go a step further and should take the court.
And I'm going to look for ways to recover if we have not received services that we've paid for.
I don't think I have to remind you that this is disgusting. I went through this and highlighted, this, this is disgusting what they've left up there.
I agree.
And this has health ramifications for the students in this building and the teachers and the administration staff. This is terrible, something's got to be done about this.
And we are working on it right now, today. I've had conversations about this. It's awful, I agree.
That's why we are taking this action, right?
Yes.
Or am I missing something?
No.
We're taking this action to get, the ball rolling on getting it cleaned up, and then we'll deal with the, the contract and, and what we were supposed to get later, when we get, get all our information on that contract.
So there's a motion and a second on the table, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, uh, the next budget committee meeting is going to be at November 6th at 5:00.
Item number eight, consideration and action to proceed with CISA-10 on energy exemption expenditure process.
And we have Kerry and John and Adam from CISA-10. Kerry's been with us before. Just so you're aware, I didn't cover this during the legislative piece because I had missed it, but, uh, Governor Walker, in the, in the budget draft that was sent to him for veto, it said something to the effect of the energy exemption will begin a moratorium in 2018. He used a red pen and wrote, crossed off beginning and wrote until 3018. So, if we would like to pursue accessing any of the energy exemption dollars that have served us well over the last few years, and, and working with CISA-10 to help facilitate that, everything needs to be finalized in a very expedited manner. So, that's why we had to change the agenda and why we have visitors here with us tonight. So we're very pleased that Kerry and John and Adam made the trip for us today. Thank you.
Thanks for having me again. I'm Kerry Ackerson, the Contracting Risk Manager for CISA-10 Facilities Management Department. As Tom said, there will be a thousand-year moratorium on the revenue limit exemption for energy efficiencies starting January 1st of 2018. Any resolutions passed before that time, as of this time, like, like other things that passed in the budget, the administrative procedure rules are not out at this time, but it's our belief, with some support from DPI, that resolutions passed before that time will be considered official. So you may remember that in the past, roughly two years ago, you guys passed two resolutions for one time, a 1617 resolution and a 1718 resolution, and that work came together over this past summer primarily, and got a lot of work done it with the high school HVAC. Prior to that, in previous years, and you guys are all familiar with this, and I heard at the, a budget committee meeting, we know what the revenue limit exemption is, we've done it, yes, you have, you've used it well. Back in 2014, when CISA-10 first came here, two of our folks did a very extensive report on all of your schools, and they identified roughly $5 million in projects, energy projects alone, that could be completed in the district. Those things are still around, you have not spent them, and, near, anywhere near $5 million, but you have done a lot with the money that you have. So we started with that list, we talked to the administration about things that have popped up since then. We did some investigation on our own by doing a small HVAC study of this building that, that you guys also discussed, and I just want to clarify one issue from that. Can I do that?
Absolutely.
So, um, and I don't know if you want this to be passed out, this is the final report of that. It is the same as the, roughly the same as the draft. I do have a copy for each quarter.
Our budget committee members, so for the people sitting here already have that, Kerry can help you, but, but other people would like to see it.
So, basically, it wasn't just that, that we found dirty spaces, there were a couple things that were broken and that were affecting, um, the heat and humidity in this school. Specifically, some economizers were coming on, meaning they were pulling in fresh air when they, when they didn't need to be or when they shouldn't be, and sometimes that fresh air was warm, sometimes it was also humid or moist, and so that was causing problems. There was also a thermostat broken, um, so calling for heat or not calling for heat that was being affected. And then there were some larger, some of the larger issues which, which you've seen. The pictures obviously show that, um, most of the places that we looked were very seriously affected by dirt, with clogged filters, filters being sucked into machines because they hadn't been changed. Part of the contract for CISA-10 to oversee the cleaning of those spaces already includes the review of the contracts that you currently have and working with administration to, to figure out who was supposed to be doing this, and what does the contract say about that, and what is their duty to you as a district? And then, and then really working with them either in a collaborative or, or not so collaborative fashion to get what you deserve and what you've paid for over several years in, in several buildings. So it's quite a lucrative contract for these folks, and I think that when brought to their attention or brought to the higher levels of their agency, that they will be willing to, to work with the district. That's my hope, that's where we want to start. You are owed something and we will make every attempt to get it for you. In the meantime, though, we're going to address the things we can as quickly as possible to make the air quality and the environmental quality better in this building. Back to the revenue limit exemption. You have received an updated or a timeline, as, as I see it, I've done, I think I've done about five of these in the past week for different districts, they're all quite similar to this timeline. Basically, I just want to ask if there's any questions on it. John Burgett, who's with me, who's a project manager, he's going to be talking about and sharing some of the projects that have been prioritized by administration that were left over on your priority list from before, and as I said, things that have come, popped up or broken in the meantime since 2014, you'll, they'll be broken out by, by school, and we hope to work with the Building and Grounds Committee and administration to prioritize those projects and actually put out a competitive RFP. I've talked to several bidders that are interested in bidding on this project. As you can imagine, this is sort of a last chance ditch effort for performance contractors across the state to get work, and many of them have already agreed to several stipulations that we suggest you put in your contracts that, that require being able to use district-preferred providers, competitively bidding the work, allowing the district and your owner's representative to see all of the bids that come in and, and select the, the provider you'd like to use. And so we put it, we put several stipulations into the contract, and all of these bidders so far have been willing to agree to those stipulations and, and bid. And they are Train, which is a large HVAC provider, H&amp;H Energy, who's currently working in the building, Complete Controls, Vesta Technology, Mauer Roofing, and Performance Services. And so we do feel like we will get a, a good response and good competitive bids on whatever projects that you do decide on. We are looking today for, if you're comfortable, a budget amount. We, we do want to go forward to putting out the RFP, and we are looking either for you to give administration the leeway to decide what would be best to, whatever you want to do, keep your levy flat, get as many projects done as you can, whatever the board decides is, is the way you want to go. So with that, unless there's questions about or concerns about the timeline, I think I'm going to let John get on to the projects in case you have any questions of, of him.
Does anyone have any questions about the timeline? Because it really is a much more expedited timeline than we've seen in the past when we've been working with Kerry.
This is very aggressive.
Well, it has to be because.
But I understand that I'm just saying that this is, there is no room for error.
And there are, most school districts that have been using these dollars are scrambling as well.
So it's going to be, uh, let it, competitive to get any of these contractors to get in.
It is, and that's why I was really, I was, I was very happy that, you know, CISA-10 has brought some contractors into the market, and I was happy that those folks are willing to, to come, even, they're quite busy and, and bid on this. I still think the more competitors you can have to bid on the projects. We'll want to scope as many projects as we can and get hard bids on those, and then what we would advise is, if there's something that we don't have a hard scope on, that we ask for what a percentage markup would be on that. So, you know, we want a hard bid on the roof, we want a hard bid on all the mechanical, for example, I'm making this up, I'm not a technical person, and then for these, you know, other projects, we want what the markup would be for you to subcontract them. That's how we think we can get the most competitive bids, by hard scoping and hard bidding as many projects as possible and then leaving that remainder.
So I guess my question, and it would be helpful to get some input, is, I'm concerned that it won't be competitive because some contractors are going to have so much work that they're going to just not, we're going to have a problem where we're not going to have enough competition to our, our, our bids, and then, I mean, how do we ensure that?
Well, I was, I.
And pricing now goes.
Right, I was worried about that as well, and so for, for several weeks, from really the moment that the veto passed, I started talking with contractors and saying, you know, what level of project would you be interested in? The, this project is fairly large, I mean, anything over, you know, if you're going to spend a million dollars, that's, that's going to get people's attention. So, this is considered a fairly large project. I'm much more concerned on the many, many districts that we're working with that are spending $300,000. That can be, that can be very tough, but, but again, I think you're, you're in a place where you have some bigger projects, and, um, like I said, I've personally spoken to representatives at those five, six companies that have said they would do the walkthrough. I have a Performance Services system on copy, that's not on yours, and that said they would do the walkthrough and that they intend to bid. North American Mechanical was the one that I spoke to that said we're just too busy.
Are you taking into consideration the fact that this building does not have an adequate vapor barrier? The walls are not painted above the ceilings, uh, it lacks insulation.
Do you want me to talk about that? Are you trying to?
Uh, that could cost as much as the heating system.
Absolutely, so, uh, we, we wanted to do some, we wanted to suggest some shorter-term, lower-cost, higher payback suggestions for this building. One of the things we're doing up, up north, where I'm from, is when we have a brick building like this, we literally drill into the wall and, and, you know, force in insulation. It's like a foam, it spreads through the wall, it's very easy to cover up, it comes up very nicely. I know the building was painted recently, and it's just, you know, they go right through the mortar, fill up the cavity, and that's, that's extremely helpful. Doesn't create a vapor barrier. Doesn't create a vapor barrier, but what it does do is it comes at, I don't know, a fifth or a sixth of the price of building interior walls, which is one of the things that the AEI study thought might help. And it probably would help, but looking at the age of the building and not knowing the long-term future of the building, you know, fixing the equipment, clean what's dirty, fix what's broken, and find things that are fairly low cost, and it just so happens that filling up these holes between these bricks, we found to be a fairly low cost solution that adds insulation, but doesn't, doesn't affect the interior of the school, you're not ripping things down, it does, it does increase the comfort. So those are the kinds of things we're looking at for this building.
And I don't want to micromanage and get into lengthy discussion, but also that report talked about the windows being a lengthy discussion, all of that, and especially the north and west facing with O E and trying to, that might provide more heat benefit than, but-
So, the one thing I'll go over before I let John talk about technical things is, when using the revenue limit exemption, the projects have to have a payback by building. So whatever the remaining useful life of this building is, those projects have to pay back within that remaining useful life. The things that are difficult to pay back are windows, roofs, sometimes water savings are hard to build up. So a lot of the projects that are easy paybacks, controls, lighting, are things that have already been done in the district. So there will be a little bit of a balancing act that we'll get into more deeply with the Building and Grounds Committee and the administration about, you know, this is what we think we can fit in for this building, because you have this one high saving measure, and then we could, you know, maybe replace some windows, which is a lower saving measure, and still be within the, still be complying with both the letter and the spirit of the revenue limit exemption. I'm really going to leave now.
Next.
Thank you, Kerry.
This is perky penny.
Can you argue about-
Well, Kerry, you actually put it down.
I gave you four pages, and I know there's a lot on the four pages, but there's a reason for four pages. Each building has to be looked at separately. So when Kerry was mentioning that we needed to show payback on these buildings, we need to show them per building. So that, that makes it just a little bit trickier too, to actually get that done. The first page, and I apologize, I've got Spring Green Elementary, I know it should be River Valley, I heard that earlier too today, so. The first page in the longest list is actually the elementary school. And just to understand how this sheet works, we've identified generically some measures, some improvement measures, that we're recommending be done in those, in this building, and then on each of the other buildings, on each sheet. We've got an estimated budget cost, that cost is the baseline cost that we'll use for determining whether there's adequate payback, so that we can actually have that resolution sent to DPI and have that approved and be able to access those funds. The next column is very important to us, it's a safety column, looking at any environmental hazards that might be there. Just on our walkthroughs, we start flagging where those areas might be, because they do add cost to your projects, and we want to make sure that we're capturing those. As you get into the next section, it's where we start calculating energy savings, and you'll see kilowatt hours, kilowatt demand, and then also dollar value. In these columns, we're actually going to use the qualified providers or the other contractors' calculations in the final report, but what we like to do is an estimate to see what we feel is there for value, to make sure that we've got a good enough blend of measures to be able to make that payback. Some of these areas, we haven't had time to do the calculations, so you'll see some columns or some rows that don't have a calculation, again, due to the timeline that we're looking at, we started pulling this thing together, trying to determine what those costs will be, and get ready to put bid specifications together for those qualified providers. They internal come in and their proposals, they'll be giving us saving estimates, and they'll be giving us their methodology for calculation, which we can look at in determining payback values. Once you get past the energy savings, there's also the potential for water savings, which we could also use for payback. And then the last area that you'll see on here is maintenance savings. We could use maintenance savings in addition to the water and the energy for payback calculations to meet the requirements of the exemption. As you look through the various pages, we've broken out the measures and categories of type, mechanical, HVAC controls, lighting, building envelope measures, and miscellaneous. Some of the buildings, we haven't identified measures. There would be a chance that there'd be additional measures that we'll want to put in, I know just listening to the meeting earlier, there's a few ideas that I heard. Trouble is, they probably won't meet the revenue exemption requirements, talking about the track, talking about playground, maybe bathroom fixtures, doing something like that, but there are some limitations, yes?
Yeah, I've got a question. You got, took us to the, almost to the right, far right margin of the first page, but simple payback in years is confusing to me because, at first I thought you were taking into account the savings in electricity, the savings in natural gas, the savings in water, and then looking at the upfront costs, and now you could calculate a simple payback, but there are lines where there's no, no savings calculated yet, and you still have payback years, how do you do that? What, help me understand-
That's just, that's just the fill of the worksheet, this is not a, estimated cost and the measure descriptions is really where we're at right now. To understand what we have to go through to meet the timelines, we have to have the rest of the sheet filled out in a gross estimate, which we will continue to do, I've got calculations that I need to put into energy, water, and maintenance. But more importantly, that same information will be gathered from the qualified providers and their bid documents, and this will be redone with their numbers to show that payback value. If they have any questions or concerns on how it may be calculated, or whether there may be savings, we'll be coaching them on those, so that we can qualify to get those measures paid for using the exemption funds. Is that-
I'll just leave it, that's okay. I'm not going to understand that completely.
Form isn't complete, it just fills-
Yeah, but yet there's numbers there, so they're estimates.
They're, yes, they're estimates and-
Your estimates.
And they're going to be updated by us before bid, there'll, there'll be more actuals and the contract actuals as we receive bids from qualified providers. It's a very good question.
Thanks.
I know, they're being careful, they're being careful, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you factor in anything in here for maintenance? Because a person that maintains this level of system has to be higher trained, it can't be done by custodial, and so there's an added factor, you're going to have a person that works for a higher wage, and we simply have got to make sure that any new system has got to be maintained, and so-
We're actually looking for measures that show maintenance savings. Now, the technical, you're correct, we may need a higher caliber or more technical, you may need a service contract, but the recommendation would be to have a service contract with tight specifications and some form of measurement to make sure that those services are being provided. But we are actually looking for measures that give us energy savings, water savings, and maintenance savings compared with what you have in place right now. And again, that helps us qualify for the funding.
That's where a building like this, where you put in a lot of maintenance dollars in recent years, I just went through your bills, thanks to Bridget, where you put in a lot of maintenance dollars regularly, year after year after year, those become costs that would be saved if you address the problem, and that helps to justify that. That's a simple answer.
Good question. Anything else I can do to describe kind of what we've done in preparation for being able to move forward with the bid requests and actually qualifying, you know, for the exemption funds?
I'll be interested to see the completed worksheets, that's, some of these numbers are-
And I agree with that, and I also agree with your earlier comments about, you know, we really got to get on this to get it done, I mean, it's going to have to be done accurate, and it's going to have to be done really fast.
So what do we need to do?
I think we need to schedule a Buildings and Grounds meeting right away, that's first order of business, and the second order of business would be to think about ranges of dollars-
Yeah.
That we're interested in accessing through this program.
But isn't that a role for the budget committee then?
Kerry, I'm going to ask, maybe on a turn, what is our timeline as far as approving a dollar amount and prioritized projects?
So, we would like to have both of those done no later than ten twenty-three.
So tonight?
So that's, well, I don't think we're going to prioritize projects tonight.
Oh, no.
But, but, you know, a dollar amount-
I think the budget committee had one in mind the other night, Matt, didn't we?
We, the budget committee, go ahead.
No, well, wasn't it six hundred fifty thousand?
It was six hundred thousand the first year and seven hundred thousand the second.
Okay, I was going to say thirty point three million over two years.
We've identified over two million, approximately two million dollars worth of need, so that's the, I know, that's the-
So, can you give me a little bit more information on the thinking process of those numbers and how you guys got there?
Absolutely, we, we thought about with our declining enrollment and what we should, I just received an email late this afternoon, and I believe, Bridget, you received it at all, if also, we should get our final budget numbers tomorrow, at which point in time-
From the state.
From the state, at which point in time we can actually start plugging it in. Our guesstimate of that six hundred thousand dollars for the eighteen nineteen school year and seven hundred thousand dollars for the nineteen twenty school year is really based on a guesstimate of what we believe our mill rate will drop-
Based on projections.
Based on projections, and so those numbers, we believe, would hold our levy relatively steady, if that makes any sense. And again, this is one of the few vehicles that you have at your disposal where you can raise revenue outside of the oil and refer on them, it's like the last program available in that regard.
One thing we could discuss was, we talked about this two years-
Use your mic.
We talked about the eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty school years, can we do this program and go longer than that, or is there a limitation?
I don't know that-
I don't want to blow you, I don't want to blow your socks off.
No, that's fine.
So, what several school districts are doing and what we've never done here, we've always done what we call a one and done, or last time we did a two and done, which we put together into one summer. You guys have always levied the exact amount you're spending in that year to help keep your levy flat. The only other option, we believe, to not raise eyebrows. You could pass a one-year resolution for the next five years in a row, we believe that would raise eyebrows, we believe that would, that somebody might say that there was an attempt to circumvent the spirit of the legislation. However, or the spirit of the moratorium, I should say, however, many schools are borrowing, and that's a whole different discussion, really, it's a whole different process. You know, if you're, if you're two-year million-dollar debt authority, which I believe you are, there would need to be a thirty-day process in this in which you would notify the community, there's, there's several other steps with that. What has worked out in the past with the districts has been going one or two years at a time, but that's a forward decision.
Could we, I mean, we have about, it looks like we have about two million dollars of projects left here, and I don't know if they'll all qualify once we get the numbers and so forth, but do we want to consider raising the, you know, going over keeping the levy flat because we know this is the last chance that we're going to have to do this?
I'm confused, tell me.
Why?
I'm just not clear on what you're, what you're proposing.
If we raised more than our guesstimate of six hundred thousand dollars in the first year and seven hundred thousand dollars in the second year, our, instead of our mill rate and levy staying level, for individual property owners, it will actually increase accordingly.
A little bit.
Correct. You're talking about, you know, four hundred thousand one year, three hundred thousand dollars the next, if you went to two.
Right, so if we, yeah, so instead of doing one point three million over two years, we do two million over two years. I just wonder if it's something we should consider because this is our last shot at it, till three thousand eighteen.
I understand that, the thing is, is that would be including some things that have paybacks of darn near three hundred years.
I just want to state that, first of all-
We don't want to do that.
First of all, we're providing this, this document is for the board and for CISA. We will not be providing, obviously, estimates or energy savings calculations to the qualified providers. They're called qualified providers for a reason. They will give you lots of ways that they believe that what they're suggesting for your district will save money in new and innovative ways. And so I don't have any doubt that the qualified providers that have already said that they would bid here will be able to find a way to make these projects work.
It's just a question of what projects we pick if they actually qualify.
I'm saying if they're, if they're on that sheet-
Yeah.
When, when we were a qualified provider-
Yeah.
We believed with your maintenance and operation costs, along with the energy savings, they qualified, and we still believe that.
Okay, okay, so this list shows the qualified projects.
We believe that the, who is now the qualified providers are even much more creative than we were.
That clarifies some things from what you said earlier, okay.
I still am unclear as to whether we should be, I'm asking for all of this.
I am too.
What was I there? Whether we should, you know, the budget committee went through a thoughtful process, we see a number here that's a lot bigger, we're thinking, we understand that we've got to limited time and we're trying to take advantage of an opportunity. I don't know that we need to, do we need to make the decision on the number tonight?
Yeah, the budget committee went through, did not have any of this information.
Okay.
So we went through a process that basically said, what keeps the levy even?
Yeah.
That was it, period, with no project cost information.
Okay.
Just a general discussion on dollars.
And that's why this wasn't in your board pack, and our friends from CISA ten have been working on it basically until recently.
Yes.
So you were working on the number outside of any specifics?
Correct.
Based on, probably based on the five million dollars in projects that was identified and prioritized in 2014, and we've ticked off the list.
Yeah, I don't think we were working on any number other than we had a discussion on what keeps the levy even, oh, one point three million dollars, okay.
And that's just a guess, and that's a, you know, we're going to start being able to solidify that a little bit more tomorrow, starting tomorrow, Monday.
So if we, if, assuming that that one point three million keeps the levy flat guesstimate, you know, understanding that's a guesstimate, and if we wanted, say we wanted to levy seven hundred thousand more dollars over two years in whatever, what is, anybody have a back of the envelope on what, what three hundred thousand dollar difference would change the levy?
I should know based from our conversations with the last-
Very little.
Wouldn't be much, right?
Actually, you're right, wouldn't be much.
What do you mean very little? So, like-
Three hundred thousand dollars spread across the property value on our district doesn't impact individual taxpayers to a great extent.
So say our mill rate with-
But I can't tell you exactly what that is.
Our mill rate with the one point three million is eleven or something, right? Or we set like ballpark?
What was that, a hundred thousand dollars at our refer on, Brian, do you know?
What?
I probably can, help me with that, please.
Were you asking what our current mill rate is?
Well, I don't know what I-
Yeah, why not? What is the part?
I'm trying to just get an example, though.
It's a little under ten right now.
Okay, so the point is, is that another three hundred and fifty thousand a year would increase that mill rate by a fraction of a point.
Well, the mill rate, yes.
It's a little under ten without the one point three million, right?
But a mill rate is like a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars of assessed property value, and we've got that broken out- value, and we've got that broken out.
Stuff that you have to get done, everybody up here understands, but it's totally.
Yeah, I think I got it. I just can't tell if there's like a little like button that says one, I mean, it says recording, I just wanna make sure that it's like actually going, you know what I mean?
No, it's gone.
All right, sweet.
Do you have it backed up enough so it's like I'm getting everybody then?
I kinda wanna get like a little overview.
Does it go like that? Yeah, yeah, all right, cool, thanks. Caroline, I'm just gonna hit pause. I'm gonna pause until we.
Jeff, can you take roll call, please? John?
Here.
Julie? Here. Dick?
Here.
Fred?
Here.
Kathy? Here. Dan?
Here.
I'm here. Mark?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Nine present. A quorum is present. May I have a motion for the proofs of notice to be accepted as proper notice and to proceed with the meeting?
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Please stand me, stand with me and say the pledge allegiance. Join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So, move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number one is public comments, and I have a couple names on the list. The first one is Bridget Roberts.
Thank you. Bridget Roberts, I live in the township of Spring Green, and I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make. The first one being that I just wanna thank everyone sitting at these tables for everything that you do, for giving your time, for being diligent, especially in these last few years when it's been really, really tough. So, I appreciate all of you, whether I agree with everything or not, I appreciate your time. The second thing is, I really appreciate that the meetings are now taped and we can watch them. I haven't been able to come to the last two meetings, and it's wonderful. It's just great, I feel like I'm still hearing and seeing everything. I would way rather be here in person, so it's a great thing. And the other thing is being able to see all of the handouts. So, bravo to everybody that made that happen, I think it's been a really, really good thing, and I personally appreciate being able to feel a part of it, even, especially when I cannot be here at the meeting, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not only is it taped, it's live. It's not?
Yes.
Is it live?
No, it's not live.
No.
Ah, it's on demand.
Casey Maxwell?
Hello, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Casey Maxwell. I taught in the elementary here for five years, and now I'm at the high school. And I also just have a thank you, I am talking today as a parent, not as a teacher. I have three little ones, one is a five-year-old who rides the bus every day to Plain, and I just wanted to say a huge thank you to Mr. Haglund and the assistants who are on those buses, because every day we do a high and low at dinner, and most of the time her high is her bus ride. They sing, the assistants taught them new songs, so like she just sings songs with her friends all the way up to Plain and all the way back, and it really is a huge, huge high for her during the day. So, from something that I was a little nervous about to being an awesome experience for her, so I just wanna say thank you for the organization that had and making that such a great experience, so.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Don Brander?
Don Brander from Lone Rock. I feel that policy one eighty-seven is too restrictive when it curbs our rights under the First Amendment.
Did anybody else choose our line and wanna make any comments? Item number two is our student council report. Tonight, we have with us Carolyn Yousli. Carolyn, you wanna just tell us a little bit about yourself before you give.
You can just use that one.
You can use that one right there, and it's Caroline.
Caroline.
Yes, Caroline, all right. So, hello, everyone, my name is Carolyn Yousli, I'm a senior over at River Valley High School, and I'm involved in a lot of things, a lot of, I am a varsity gymnast and cheerleader for football, I'm also on the student council, which is why I'm here tonight. I'm also a student representative, and I also do forensics and math club, Spanish club, I just went to Belize with the Spanish club this past summer, so that was a lot of fun. I'm also on the For Pete's Take Board, and I love to read and travel and go to school everywhere, so.
Somehow she able to.
So, to start, I already did a little bit of an introduction, but my name is Carolyn Yousli, student council officer over at the high school. Myself and Lauren Knudson, obviously, will be alternating position as the student rep here on the board. So, just to give a little bit of a recap on what's happened in the district, as we have had a lot of great things that have happened, and with more to come in the future, so I'll start with homecoming. So, homecoming was the last week of September, the twenty-ninth, and as a senior, I got to be near a lot of the action, being at, you know, different planning committees with the dance and all that fun stuff. So, I just wanted to reiterate to you the phenomenal job that Mrs. Graffunder did with the school fair and the FFA club, they put in so many hours, you know, making sure that the livestock, the artwork, the food stands all went flawlessly. I would also like to say thank you to the volleyball teams as well as student council because they did something really cool, where they had all their proceeds go towards the hurricane victims in the south, so the volleyball had pity for hurricanes, and then student council had a cotton candy sign, which all the proceeds went towards the school in the south to help them out, so that was super cool. And also, on Saturday, we had the homecoming dance as opposed to Friday, and we actually had a student, Maya Jensen, be the DJ, which was really cool. She did an amazing job, and it was definitely an exciting and fun way to end a great week. So, at the elementary level, the Black Hawk Bolt happened this past week, which raised over thirty thousand dollars for our elementary staff to use towards their teachings, which is amazing. And Mrs. Katner's class attended the play The Stinky Cheeseman by Eau Claire's Children's Theater at Richmond Center High School. I presume the, it was better than it smelled, but the first and second graders will also be visiting the fire station this week, and RBE and ACES enjoyed a presentation called The Ned Show, teaching students to never give up, encourage others, and do your best, which use humor, storytelling, yo-yo tricks, and magic to teach a powerful message to our elementary students. And they're also doing kindness week over at the elementary school, where they're doing bi-weekly challenges with random acts of kindness, so a lot of happiness going on over there. Keeping in theme with these amiable jesters, the second graders at RBE have started a kindness club, and they had a fundraising activity to raise money for the schools that were negatively impacted by Hurricane Harvey, so kind of the same thing as our student council and our volleyball teams did. So, they did a fundraiser called Hats for Harvey, so they were asked to bring in a monetary donation in return for wearing a hat to school, so they got to wear hats to school, though. And they raised over fifteen hundred dollars. So, it was, the money collected was sent to Bear Creek Elementary in Houston, Texas, and then they also did a tug toys event for dogs and animal shelters. Can you guys hear me? I feel like I'm like.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, and the toys were made from little T-shirts that they got from local shelters, and this all incorporated story that they were reading about dogs, so that was kinda cute. The fruit and veggie cart has also begun at Arena this year, which is sponsored by the ACES PTO, and the cart is filled with fruit and veggies, and each classroom has an opportunity to receive a mid-morning snack on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. So, health screening for vision and hearing was also completed at ACES on October fourth, and the Lion Clubs helped out with the assistance for that, and the health department at the end of October will be providing fluoride treatments for ACES students, so clean teeth. All right, on to the middle and high schools. The middle and high school choir departments will be having their first concert on October twenty-fourth at the high school new gym, beginning at seven PM. All choirs six through twelve will be performing. I myself am in choir, I'm in choir at the high school, and I can attest that these are wonderful college-level pieces, so if you're not doing anything, definitely come and check it out. Musical rehearsals for Into the Woods have begun, and the performances are December fifteenth through the seventeenth, and they're actually at the Touchdown in American Players Theater this year, so that'll be really neat, and I'm very excited. Mackenzie Richardson also earned a spot in the Wisconsin School Music Association's mixed honor choirs, so she actually was awarded the opportunity to go perform at the Overture Center in Madison at the end of October, and she is an amazing singer, I can definitely attest to that. So, October's a busy time for sports as well. The high school boys soccer team is hoping for their first conference championship under the direction of new coach Brian Quigley. Football will be playing in Prairie Sheen tomorrow, and I know that they're hoping for a win that'll take them to the playoffs. Volleyball is currently having their last conference matchup tonight, and I know that they're hoping for some wins coming up in regionals, and swimming is also doing great, and they have conferences at the end of October. So, there's all around a lot of talent in River Valley, ranging from our athletics to our music departments, so that's really positive. I just wanted to finish on giving a little overview of a Students Go to College event that just happened this past week at the high school, so all seniors, so myself included, were bussed up to the Green Tech Building where we were given presentations from public, private, two-year technical colleges. We were also given presentations on like things like financial aid and some different writing strategies to use for our personal statements. And then in the afternoon, we actually got to send our transcript, transcripts into three schools. I needed a lot of options, so I kind of had to send more than that, but that was really positive, and it only took a couple minutes, so I was actually able to spend the rest of my afternoon working on my essays for college. So, I found that to be a really positive experience, and that day you were also able to apply to M A T C and Southwest Tech for free, so I know a lot of students took advantage of that opportunity who normally would not have applied. So, I really viewed that as a positive experience for everyone, and I hope that they will continue to do that. So, to wrap things up, this last week was the first quarter progress report, so we are officially one eighth of the way done with the school year, which is totally crazy, and I believe that wraps it up, thank you.
Thank you. That was a great first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, update on two thousand seventeen eighteen and two thousand eighteen nineteen district configuration, transition, and transportation.
I know last month, we had a few teachers from Spring Green, or excuse me, River Valley Elementary School come and talk about the transitions that have occurred in that building, Lori Berenbrook and Linda Katner, and this month, we invited Michelle Weiss, Melinda Moore, and Rhonda Legg to talk a little bit about how things are transitioning up at Plain, so ladies, if you'd like to come up, that would be great. Otherwise, Mr. Haglund and I could babble on about the transition that you've heard from month after month, so, thank you, ladies.
Well, I guess I got elected to go first. I'm Melinda Moore, I am an early childhood and 4K teacher up at the Early Learning Center. This is my fifth year at the, in that school, and it's, it was hard last spring, honestly, to see some of my school family and knowing that they were gonna be moving, but I have to say it's been a lot of fun welcoming a new group of staff and having all young students in our building, especially, and I'm gonna speak just on behalf of the preschool, or the P threes, as we call them, or the littles, and they are early childhood students, and they are three, and all with special needs. And having a school that is designated just for young students is an amazing experience just for those little ones, I mean, they're maybe up to here on my leg, and they toddle down the hall like they own the building, and so it's been, it's great for them to know that they can go pretty much anywhere in our building, and we don't have big fifth graders, which, you know, that's okay, they have their place too, not in my classroom, but, so I have to say that it's been a great experience just for the little ones, for parents, they know that it's all young children in the building, and we have a lot of staff, they brought a lot of associates in all the classrooms who help and assist, I have associates from other classrooms that help get my kiddos off the buses, and so kinda everybody takes ownership of the young ones, and that's, it's an amazing experience. I also appreciate the fact that I get to see my 4K students from last year, and they're all waving at me in the hall, and then just kinda keeping tabs on them, so it's exciting. One of the pluses that the staff and the administration really did for the early childhood students and for some of the other students is they made sure that there was a place for our specialists, our occupational therapists and our physical therapists have their own therapy room up there, and it is designed just for those physical and fine motor needs, and our speech pathologist is up there ninety percent of the time, and so in the past, she would be in our classrooms, in and out, see students, and then would have to come back to Spring Green. Now she's there the majority of the time, and so we have time to collaborate and meet on our students' needs, and that's an amazing experience. One thing that I think I would like to see us look at, especially for the little kiddos, if we're looking in, as we look into the future, would be to, to address our playground. We've got a lot of great equipment out there and space, but for the young ones, I think that, and in my heart, I would hope that we could look to focusing on, especially some of those kiddos have physical needs and they need to be out there, and climbing and that, that if we could look to address maybe some equipment that would really focus towards the young children's needs. Any questions for me?
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I'm Rhonda Legg, I have the four-year-olds, we have eighty of them, so our biggest population. The school year started out a little busy, trying to herd all the children everywhere, but overall, it's going great. The students are very comfortable with our school, they understand the expectations, the routine, we love seeing the five-year-olds every day. The only concern that we have is with our bathrooms. I talked to Mr. Rometh about that and also Mr. Haglund. We only have, there's two bathrooms, basically eight stalls, and it's very hard to get the children, you know, a hundred and twenty-five children who need toileting help, you know, a lot of those kids can't pull up their pants, they're coming out the door, we don't have proper, many of the children are very short, they can't reach to hit the water, so we talked about maybe updating that, so it's all electronic. I know the tech ed department is building stands to go around so everybody can get up, and we're just creatively trying to figure out how to get everybody through in an orderly fashion, and we've had very few accidents, but we've still had a few, so, but otherwise, it's going great, we love it, it's a little building, and everybody knows, everybody and where to go, and the kids enjoy seeing each other throughout the day in the lunchroom, they love the bussing, it's going really well. Any questions?
With the bathroom situation, would more stalls be helpful and also smaller fixtures, or?
I think it would.
Both things?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely, and I know we had Mr. Ferguson come up, and we kinda walked through the building, and so we love that we have our own building, you know, and we can all understand and relate to the little ones running around, but there were things that were kind of overlooked to make it accessible for everyone to feel successful.
Just the size of the fixtures, the strength it requires to push the water for hand washing on, things that we honestly didn't, just didn't anticipate being a problem.
Right, and, you know, it's nice that with the assistants and with all of us teachers, we kinda take turns going into the bathroom and helping, you know, our students out, but it would be nice for them to be successful and be able to do that all on their own.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody, my name is Michelle Weiss, I've been teaching in the district.
I've been teaching in the district for 20 years. I am a River Valley graduate, so I've lived here my whole life. I've seen a lot of changes here at River Valley, growing here, growing up here, but I really believe that the Early Learning Center was a great change. When I was asked by Mr. Wormuth to come and talk to you tonight, I asked my 5K team, what are some positive things and some things that we need to work on? One of the things we came up with, we're extremely fortunate to work together as a 5K team and having associates in our room is a major plus. And also, being able to work with Andrea Kinney coming into our classrooms to help the kids learn how to read and all those early learning skills, it's really been important and I just want to thank you for that opportunity. We're able to share ideas, problem solve, and better meet the needs of our students. I think if you walk into the building, the kids feel really excited to be there. Our building is full of energy and you're welcome to come up anytime and help out, especially when we have fun events coming up. The kids have a lot of friends and their friends aren't just from their towns, but they're from all the communities. And I know that was a concern for some parents, but if you walk into the classrooms, I think you wouldn't even be able to tell which students are coming from what communities because they just love being there and hanging out with their friends. This type of situation where we're all in the same building needs more collaboration and it's not just taking place monthly or taking place through email, but it's taking place daily. And it's not just the teachers who are talking, but we're also getting ideas from associates and other special teachers. And we're finding ways to make things more age appropriate. The Black Hawk Bolt was a successful fundraiser, but we did a mini version up at the Early Learning Center and so, it wasn't so overwhelming for the 4Kers and the 5K. And they felt, they just had a lot of fun. If you were up there, you would have noticed how much fun they were having. We're going to be doing some more monthly things together as a team too. We, as a kindergarten team, are getting, do a fall festival and we're going to do it in our classrooms and mix the kids all up. And we hope to do some things again in November and December. In December, we're trying to do a caroling thing with Mr. Ellinger and so, that collaboration in the whole building is really important and worthwhile. Of course, there are the things to work on. Scheduling is tough. I'm used to starting my day at 8 o'clock when I went to school, when I taught here in Spring Green, and being done at like 3:00. And with the kids coming up from Spring Green, my day isn't starting quite then. So, it took some creative thinking on scheduling and changing some things around so that we're giving our students as much instructional time as possible and making everything developmentally appropriate for them. The busing issues were a little bit of a problem at first, but thanks to our associates, those types of things have been kind of solved and the rest of the administrative team. We asked some of our students who were in 4K and playing last year, how they liked the school this year. And the one things they said is they liked that the lunchroom is quieter, there's not as many kids in there. They, they feel like the school is smaller because the big kids aren't there and they're really happy that the bells are much softer this year because they didn't like being woke up during naptime. But, last of all, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to work in a school with so much adult support. It really does mean a lot to have that extra person in the room to help make the groups smaller and to help work with individual students who are struggling. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Michelle, can you just, you mentioned scheduling and that the day, you kind of truncates your day a little bit. Like how much?
So, some of the kids from Spring Green, the buses transferring from Spring Green coming to Plain, that bus isn't arriving until maybe 8:15 or 8:20. And so, my day isn't starting. So, what I've done now is our playtime or their socialization, that's now in the morning instead of at the end of the day. So, we kind of worked through that to make that better. Plus, they're also getting ready to go home at the end of the day early as well so they can get back here for the transfers. So, we're starting to clean up at like 2:30 to 2:35 so those kids are ready to be on the buses, boarded, and heading down the hill by 2:55. So, the days are a little bit shorter, but we're thinking of creative ways to solve that problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I take an opportunity to talk a little bit about the Black Hawk Bolt so everybody has some common information? And can everybody hear me from here or do you need me to stand up? I'll stand up with the microphone. Just a few, a few facts.
Good one, Stroh.
Unnecessary.
On the plane.
It just means nice.
Thank you, Jake. Appreciate that. So, we had our Black Hawk Bolt fundraiser last Friday, the 6th of October, and it was, you've heard different pieces. Some of you were there and I just wanted to kind of relay a little bit of factual information. This is our only fundraiser for the year for our newly joined PTO and our goal, fundraising goal was $20,000. We exceeded that number pretty substantially and I think when it's all said and done, we'll have raised over $32,000, which is really, really incredible. The money for the PTO is, you know, it goes, it goes fast. There's lots of field trip needs at the elementary level, additional busing costs, things like that that have been used to, that the money is used traditionally to pay for, funding special events, gaining additional playground, equipment, balls, nothing, none of the major structures necessarily, but, you know, balls and toys for the playground, things like that. Teachers are typically getting some additional money for them to spend outside of their normal budget on classroom supplies and things that they need. And they have the ability to, you know, put in requests, special requests for the PTO. So, it's just, it's money that goes right back to the students. And we had over $22,000 raised just in student donations alone. So, the Black Hawk Bolt is really kind of a fun run, one-on-one basis, where if you think about, at least when I was growing up, you had the bike-a-thons, you'd go out and get pledges to ride a certain number of miles, you know, or per mile, you get 10 cents a mile or whatever. So, this is similar to that, only the pledge or donation that a student would get is based upon just them knowing and giving their best effort and doing the best that they can for their 20-minute amount of time, first through fifth grade that they run, or the 15-minute amount of time that they run if they're in 4K or 5K. And we had, you know, two separate events. So, we had almost 60% of our students give at least some donation to contribute and, you know, all of the students run regardless if they got donations or pledges anyway. We had almost $9,000 in business sponsorships. We had 64 businesses from across River Valley sponsor this event at, in some way. They could have donated some prizes for the raffles, prizes for student earnings and things like that. We had bronze, silver, and gold level of sponsorships and we had 18 of those businesses contribute at the gold level, which is at least $250. We celebrate that with banners at each of the school that have their logos and names on that. But, that's pretty exceptional. 64 businesses across, you know, each of the communities. So, it was, it was really cool. We had, we had one student raise over $1,000 themselves just in student pledges. It was crazy. Over $1,000 to one student. Pretty exceptional. And what else here do I want to, I want to mention? In celebration, we'll have, you know, kind of our assemblies. We're going to do that at the Early Learning Center on probably the morning of Halloween. I'm going to dress up in a costume and have some recess with the kids and do some readings with each of the classrooms. And then in Spring Green, I'm going to get some pies in the face apparently. So, that's, that's good. And I've learned over the years that anything's going to be better than wearing high heels, which I did a few years ago. Never again. So, on top of all of this information and the money that we raise, as a parent, I don't have to worry about fundraisers anymore. It's really kind of nice. But, what really stands out about this event is the number of people that volunteered to help, the amount of work that our teachers and staff did to make this event happen, and then the parents and the students. On those events, if you had an opportunity to attend, there was a lot of people that came to watch and support all of our students in the Early Learning Center. That event was set up and done, taken down in an hour and a half. And it was a good time. The 4K students started the run, the 5K students found places alongside the course and all they did was stand up and cheer on the 4K kids and give them five. It was cool. We had music playing, we had parents that would jump in and help students that may have, you know, been walking or struggling a little bit. It was great. And at River Valley Elementary, we had the same thing, a tremendous amount of parents and grandparents and community members that showed up and supported. The weather turned a little bit foul and was spitting rain, but the kids had just as much fun. And the support that they showed for each other really was amazing and that's what stands out to me. So, I felt it appropriate to bring it up in regards to our transition because it really was about, you know, River Valley that day. So, it was cool.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Transportation is also part of this individual item, so I briefly wanted to mention, last month, we heard a couple of comments about there were some issues with the busing going on. And this is a really important issue to all of us to get this right. And after even after the board meeting, I had a board member talk to me about how important this was. And I just want you to know how responsive our administration is. They turned right around and then next week, they pulled together people from Lamers, Bonnie Hood, Tom, Jamie, and they got together to talk about this issue. I was a little disappointed that there wasn't other representation there to talk about the issues. But, you did have a meeting, Tom, and were there some changes that came out of that?
We've continued to make changes and I know that Lisa and Darby have been involved as well. Brian's very involved in scheduling buses for activities throughout the day, really. The number of buses that we have on the roads for sports and activities is also pretty intense. So, we continue to meet with Lamers. They've been responsive. We're working with them to make sure that the bus drivers have tools that they can use for behavioral issues as well as driving the students safely to and from school, which is our first goal every day.
And none of the buses are overcrowded?
No.
And they're all?
No.
Okay. Great. Okay. Item number four, Arena Community Elementary Presentation. We have members from the Arena Community Elementary School, governing council, and staff, and they will provide information on their activities over the last years.
And I think Tara, I think you're taking lead tonight. Is that correct? Perfect. And thank you all for joining us this evening. Brian, are you going to help?
Yeah, there's a little presentation because I thought it would be more informational. And part of the reason we're doing this is because at the end of the charter, it was to give a five-year preview of what we did because you gave us the opportunity and we wanted to share what we took and how we grew from it. A couple of things I wanted to point out before we began was one of the big things for me and a lot of the staff was that ability to build what we wanted to do, to see our growth and be the drivers of it. And that was really growing for me because you really pushed it a lot harder when you were a part of the decision-making. And then the ability to reflect and collaborate with my teammates of what worked, what didn't work, and how we could make it work. And that, I think too often, we forget the reflection and the collaboration and if I was to move forward, I would say that is a big piece. And the other one was the community. And you build a community within your school with the teachers and the students, but you also learn to build a community outside of your classroom and outside of the school. And many of the activities we did, we pulled in community members. In fact, they got to the point where they were comfortable enough where they'd stop in, just like Ms. Nelson did, and said, hey, how can I support you? I hear you're doing agriculture. And they know somebody who knows somebody and then it starts to become a whole community project. And that was huge. And not only that, AcesN was great because you were able to visit other schools and see what other teachers are doing. And then if you had things that you wanted to build based on what they were doing, they were always willing to talk to you or come in. And I love the teachers I work with in all the schools, but sometimes it's neat to see something that's done at another school and then have that relationship so you can say, I can't remember how you did this, I'm having a problem, can you give me some support? And that was a big takeaway for me.
Could I just interrupt you?
Yeah.
AcesN is the Innovative Schools Network. That part of your charter dollars on an annual basis went to this organization and they served as kind of a technical support organization. Sorry.
No, that's, I'm glad you did. So, anyways, I kind of want to present the video for you. It gives you some pictures and some talk from the teachers. And if you have any questions, let me know. But, thank you for giving us that opportunity. The first thing you'll see is the mission and vision statement that we built together and then the pillars that we based our school on.
It's probably just needs a little time to warm up.
The purpose of the Teacher-led pillar is to teach educators and administrators to work toward a shared goal that focuses on better student learning and develops effective teachers. The Teacher-led pillar allowed Aces staff to create common planning time by utilizing a monthly early release schedule. This collaborative time was critical in orchestrating all school themes and events, problem-solving day-to-day building issues, and reflecting on current teaching practices and curricula. Teachers developed report cards that better suited their STEM curricula and were more informative to parents. Aces staff determined that trimesters were better timeframes for student assessment. We also had input regarding new staff hired in the building. Being teacher-led created a very strong professional community at Aces. We were highly motivated, worked well together, and learned from each other.
As a charter school, one of the pillars we chose was STEM. And the reason we chose STEM as our pillar is we felt that science curriculum time in elementary school was starting to take a decline. There wasn't as much time spent on it. There's also that big push for STEM in K through 12 schools. And looking down the road, after talking to several of the schools that we visited, we learned that by increasing the STEM education early helps in the understanding of STEM concepts later in the middle school and the high school. When we visited these schools, we saw a variety of STEM education. The two that stood out the most was Project Lead the Way and Lego Robotics. Both of them were problem-based, which we really enjoyed. They were hands-on, they included science and engineering, which were big, and the kids were just in love with it. We saw the younger kids building street sweepers that had pulleys and levers. The older kids were doing robotics that involved coding and a lot of problem solving. So, those were our two pushes for when we went into STEM. And we also wanted a program that was unified, that started from K and all the way went through fifth grade. And we would see the progress grow with the problem-based education.
Responsive classroom is one of Aces' pillars and with grant dollars, we were able to have extensive training and visit other schools who use the responsive classroom model. Also, the grant allowed us to invite other River Valley teachers and administrators to responsive classroom trainings. Responsive classroom has made a positive change in Aces' school environment. Teachers model correct behaviors and interventions with students. Last year at the AcesN conference, we learned about mindset for learning. Several staff members added teaching the traits of joyful and independent growth to Aces. Empathy, persistence, resilience, optimism, and flexibility were taught through children's literature. The grant has helped staff and students make gains in their behavior and personal growth. The grant has helped staff and students make gains in their behavior and personal growth. Inquiry-based learning is an approach to learning that is based on the idea that when students are presented with a scenario or problem and are assisted by a facilitator, they will identify and research issues and questions to develop their knowledge or solutions. Inquiry includes problem-based learning and can be used in small-scale investigations and projects. It is a dramatic process of being open to wonder and puzzlement. Inquiry stimulates learning, promotes student engagement, and encourages deeper thinking. It enables students to take ownership over their own learning and reach their goals. Inquiry empowers student voice and choice, fosters curiosity, and the love of learning.
It does on itself. Anna does it a little.
Parents, community members, and businesses were very interested in what was happening at Aces. They were eager to get involved in any way they could. A volunteer coordinator scheduled volunteers to work on classroom or building projects, to work with individual children in areas of need, or to listen to children read AR. Our volunteer numbers increased from about a half a dozen to approximately 20 regular volunteers. The arena historians partnered with us so that we could learn the historical perspective on our schools and community. A business lunch was held for all local businesses to come and see firsthand what classrooms were doing. Students made exhibits and provided demonstrations for the guests. From here, many business partnerships were formed. Those partnerships provided valuable in-classroom lessons and field trip opportunities.
Hello, I'm Kelly Raski. I'm a parent and a PTO president for Aces. And I just wanted to take some time to say what I like about Aces and what my child has benefited from going to this school. She's benefited a lot from the small group settings, the communities being so involved, the hands-on approach to learning, the community coming out for a lot of events that we had, such as the cardboard challenge, the Agriculture Day. We had a run that the community came out for. It was amazing to see everyone come together and support our school. I feel that the technology-based learning has helped both my children. It started about five years ago, so my older child didn't benefit from it as much as my younger one. But she learned a lot by hands-on and being able to work with her peers and have to, you know, come up with solutions to things that needed to be done. And that knowledge was retained longer, because she learned that way.
Very nice video, and I know that Tara and Mike McDermott helped put this. Mike was coming or he's not coming today?
I don't know.
Yeah, here, but I know that he helped put that together for you as well, so.
That's my musical interlude. Hi, my name is Carrie Gribble. I am the Secretary on the Aces Governing Council. I have had the privilege of working with this team for the last three and a half years. I am one of the parent reps, so I have a 1st grader and a 5th grader at Aces this year. We are so pleased that we were able to share that video with you, and then hopefully you've had the opportunity to look over the report that we submitted to you. We're excited to share the innovative activities that Aces has participated in. We also hope that you can see that we've been highly successful and have accomplished a lot over the course of the last few years. We hope that the investments in training and technology can be used to benefit the entire district. It's critical that we look for innovative ways to engage with our students moving forward. We believe that one of the keys to the Aces' success has been having a shared mission and vision that all staff believe in and that provides a framework for all that we do. We have also closely partnered with community members and businesses to encourage collaboration and sharing that help to unite the community. We are committed to providing the best education that we can for all River Valley School District students, and we have provided some suggestions or best practices that we think may be helpful as we move into the transition phase. Were there any questions raised or clarifications that we can provide as a result of this report?
I thought it was a really great report, and thank you so much. One question I had was about the volunteer coordinator. You mentioned that in the video. Who was, like, was that one of the teachers or was that one of the parents? And how did that work?
Sure, so we would send out a survey at the beginning of the academic year to ask parents and community members if they were interested in participating in volunteer activity. We provided them a couple of options. Do you have a specific skill set that might be helpful? Are you willing to do anything? Are there particular times and dates? Generally, Monica was working with one of the staff members, so it was a collaborative effort between those two to kind of match up volunteers with specific teachers for duties.
Yeah, I also love your report and the passion that you folks bring to that, all of the work. And I found it really innovative and inspiring that you reached out to so many other districts across the state to really open doors for yourselves and learn, bring new knowledge to all of us. So it's very cool.
Thank you for your report, and thank you for all the teachers and staff coming here today.
Can I add one more thing? Can I make a little argument? I think it should be said that, and I know that this has been an emotional time, thank you, and that it can be easy to feel like this is all going away and that there's a feeling of loss. And there's just so much here that I would hope that we can build on. And as you say, the best practices be used throughout the district. It's a great time, we're starting strategic planning. I know, so there's like another whole mechanism for sort of absorbing those best practices. And so I just wanna, good job, I mean, good job this has not gone unnoticed. And it's a great achievement and it's not lost, so thank you very much.
Thank you to the board for giving us that chance to do it five years ago, so thank you.
Item number five, review of homecoming and school fair.
First of all, thank you all for coming today, it was great. We've talked a lot about school fair and homecoming already. Caroline did a good job covering some of the activities. From my perspective, it seemed like, and maybe it was weather-related, there were more people on our school grounds this year than ever. I know we continue to make a push to make the school fair itself more of an educational experience. And in talking to a number of teachers, the work that Sherry does to have stations set up, learning stations, is really, really cool. And all around, it was, you know, very few behavioral incidents, just a really, really great day and experience in our district. The one thing that we've talked about, that I've been thinking about administratively, is how to engage students that aren't traditionally reinforced by activities like homecoming or traditional school activities, and engage those students in the day a little bit more than they might want to be. So that's something, at least administratively, we've started to talk about and wanna make sure that everyone, you know, one of our many goals this year is 100% participation in activities. And that isn't lost on us, and we wanna make sure that everyone is engaged in some positive way.
Thank you. Item number six, RV TV 2017-18 Elite Honor Roll Award. River Valley's RV TV earned a place on the Elite Honor Roll for the second year in a row and is the only Wisconsin school to earn the honor for 2017-18. Darby, did you wanna talk a little bit about it?
Just briefly?
RV TV.
Yeah, it continues, and I wanna thank Matt Snow. He's been taking the lead in this, kind of transitioning last year with...
Darby?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah, I was trying, he's a big voice, so I'll go to Mike.
You can raise it up a little.
Second year in a row.
Mark picked this short straw today.
The second year in a row, we've received this honor. Matt Snow has taken over as kind of the lead with utilizing our service learning program and incorporating that with the RV TV. Matt Snow, Brian Cry, Luke Thatcher, and myself will be going to the WADA to present about how to best the Athletic Directors Association of Wisconsin to present on how we've utilized RV TV within our district and try to show some other people how they might be able to do that as well. So that's gonna be nice to be able to kind of show what we've done and creating that right now. Yeah, it's nice, and thank you to all the kids that take part. Our sponsors have been great within the community. It's been a good thing for our district, so thank you.
Awesome, they agree.
That's really cool, go ahead.
Yeah, we also, something new this year that Mr. Snow created was a zero-hour digital media class. So he selected a couple of us, and what we essentially have is a zero hour, so it doesn't show up on our schedule. But throughout the course of the year, I think like 10 of us, we, throughout the year, just pick 10 slots where we go in, videotape, or commentate, or run the cameras, and then it's, we're eligible for an additional latte pointer or something like that that goes towards graduation. So that's something new that was added that's cool.
Item seven, WASP Business Honor Roll Awards Presented to Area Businesses.
Mr. Haglund? Yep. All right, so for the last three years since I've been here, we've nominated five businesses to be recognized by your association, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And each year they get selected. This year, I just did a quick count and I sent you an email a little bit ago. There was about 50 businesses across the state of Wisconsin, five of them being in our district, that were recognized by WASP. So this year, the five were the Kramer Company in Plain, The Shed Restaurant in Spring Green, American Players Theater, Arena Cheese in Arena, and Whiskote Asphalt Maintenance LLC in Lone Rock. So those five businesses were presented a certificate at the end of the third quarter of the homecoming football game, which was very cool. And they are also featured online, and I can post that on our webpage and Facebook. And then when I submitted the nominations, the director of this program actually called and said, "Hey, we'd like to highlight American Players Theater." So fortunately, Ms. Young knows how to do these sort of things. Helped and assisted in writing, they were highlighted. Actually, you guys were on the cover, I saw, so, which is awesome. So some cool pictures and just a cool, a little more in-depth about how the joint venture between a business and school has a positive impact on everybody. So thank you to everybody, thank you guys for coming, and we look forward to doing it again next year.
And I just wanna point out that every year, when we, the last three years, we've talked about this administratively, there are so many businesses. And if you saw one of the last slides in Aces' presentation, they listed the businesses that they're collaborating with. And Mr. Haglund was throwing out numbers about the businesses and individuals that were involved in the Black Hawk poll. And it's challenging for us on an annual basis to identify just five businesses, because there are many, many more deserving businesses that are connected with us in the area. So I don't want that to be left unsaid.
Item number eight, Third Friday Pubal Count Report.
If I didn't get this in the packet, I just, it's just one more number that we utilize, and I'll send some copies to the public, too. Yeah, and I'd also like you to look at the count numbers that are in your board packet, too. I'm just passing one around. But the Third Friday count is a number that isn't run through any kind of formulas. So when you, we usually give you numbers, we're talking about membership count, which is a little bit different. Third Friday count is literally just the students in seats on that particular day. And you can see some historical data on the sheet that I just gave you. Give you a little bit of historical data over the last three years about the number of families and corresponding students that are homeschooled. And then also the number of students that are open enrolled in and open enrolled out of our district. And because we were consolidating elementary schools, I was very concerned about a huge spike in the number of students that were open enrolling out. And it's a little bit more than I would like, certainly, but it's not as great of an increase as we were anticipating. We'll contact the open enrolled out families and open enrolled in families through survey later in the year. We do that on an annual basis. And we'll report out about why families have elected to come here and why families have elected to go elsewhere. And we take that activity very seriously on an annual basis as well.
Just to be clear, I think I know the answer, but the homeschool families and students are not included at all at the Third Friday count, are they?
Correct, no.
Okay.
No, and we can't contact homeschool families, like, in a survey kind of way. We still have some families, if you look at the asterisks, that haven't filed their paperwork. We're working with them to do that. We can contact them about that, because there are truancy laws associated with that. So if your student isn't, your child isn't coming to school and you haven't filed homeschool reports, it's our obligation to start truancy proceedings. So we can contact them about either going one way or the other, but we can't ask them about reasons why they might homeschool or whether they've ever considered the River Valley School District or things like that.
Thanks.
Sure. Thank you. Item number nine, update our strategic planning process.
In your packet, you'll notice that Mr. Roppers has sent a timeline. He and I have sent a lot of information back and forth. I know he and Paula have been in communication. He's coming out to do a meeting with our administrative team. That's the first activity he would like to do next week, so we're already starting on that. And moving forward quickly with Mr. Roppers.
So we don't need to do anything at this time next month?
No, I think he's gonna be contacting board members to meet with you very much in the same way that he's meeting with the administrative team next week in the very near future, so we'll help try to facilitate that connection.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Tom. Item number 10, Spring Green Arts Coalition Grant Awarded to the High School Art Department. The High School Art Department received a $1,484.96 grant.
And Casey and I had a chance to talk about that within the last couple of days. And I think, Casey, you used the grant dollars to purchase cameras for your photography class, is that correct?
Yeah, the High School Art Club did a matching donation for that, and we were able to purchase five T6 DSLR cameras to start photography course at the high school. So we have the old darkroom that was a darkroom, and there was a storage room, is now a darkroom again, so we're able to do some film development and some digital work. And it's, I'm so grateful to them for having that. Without it, we wouldn't be able to run the course. So I think it's awesome. I have a whole new group of students who, you know, claim to not be artistic because they can't draw, but they can take pictures. So I'm reaching a whole new group of kids, so I'm very grateful to the Arts Coalition for allowing us to do this.
You are actually able to find film and chemicals to develop film?
You have to order them online. You can't get them online.
Wow.
There are so many books to do it, so.
Well, thank you, Casey.
Thank you. Item 11, Board Reminders and Announcements. I have a couple here. Tom, Deb, Dick, and Mark are going to the convention, so Paula's just gonna keep the three rooms. Dick and Mark are gonna be sharing one. So after this, there won't be any rooms available if you decide to go on a later date. The annual meeting is coming up October 26th at 7 o'clock in a little theater. And the last announcement is the meetings in arena, the community meetings are Monday, October 23rd at 6:30 and Sunday, October 29th at 1:30. And they'll be at the, the school. They're being organized by a village trustee, but they're not being put on by the village board or the school board. It's just a community meeting. Does anybody have any other public announcements?
I do, actually. We have a barn dance on, in our barn tomorrow, Saturday night, and everybody's invited, seriously.
Friday, or Saturday?
Saturday night, Saturday night. The way you'll find our farm is you'll, this picture here that was in the home news last week with the hawk on top of the, the River Valley Hawk. And the sign that says sore like a hawk, that, that's at the entrance to our driveway, so.
What time's it? I'm just gonna go look around for that.
Yeah, just look around for that. That's right. 296 per mile, Dick. No, no, we got a chain there. You see why it's flying so hard?
Alright, we start south of the river and then move our way down, okay.
I think this is on Facebook somewhere too.
Dress, dress code, gotta wear blue jeans.
Yeah!
Thank you, Dick. Item 12, legislative update.
Okay. Uh, there is a new plan to boost sparsity aid, uh, with the governor's backing. Yeah, it, it, it's, it's almost a, a wonderful opportunity, but they're gonna increase from $300 a student to $400. They're gonna increase the limit from 745 students to 1,000. So we just missed it. But they're going in the right direction. Another thing that's, uh, in process now this week, Senate, uh, there was a Senate Bill 236 that would impose significant new requirements for competitive bidding of school construction contracts. School districts are one of the few state agencies that, uh, did not necessarily have to secure, uh, competitive bids. And, and so now into the future, and this has pretty much, uh, unanimous support, at least on the Republican side. It means that it will pass. Uh, school districts will, or anything over $50,000, we're gonna have to go through a competitive bid process probably, if that passes. So we were one of the few, uh, public agencies that was able to fly under that radar up till now. And, and finally, I'll just note that Wasbe is starting to accept policy and resolutions uh, for the, um, the state education conference. So some school districts have come forth and put in some really, I think some important, uh, things for consideration. And again, I serve as our delegate there. Uh, I will be, uh, reviewing all of these, but look, they're looking at for more voucher transparency, particularly on, on our, our tax bills to see how much money goes for, to pay for these vouchers that, um, are increasing in number in the state. Things like, um, full open enrollment funding, uh, where the per pupil revenue received for residents, uh, will, will be increased. And high poverty aid modified, uh, to category, to categorical aid outside of revenue limits. These kinds of things I think are, are hopeful for us, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
Item 13, board training opportunities.
Okay, so we all missed the CISA III Governance Workshop today, if you didn't attend, that happened today. But coming up, um, on October 20th is the Wasbe School Law Seminar, and that's in Madison. And, and then in, on November 4th in Stevens Point is the Legislative Advocacy Conference. So, important things if you are interested in engaging.
Can I jump back to legislative update?
Yes, sir.
Because I wasn't paying, but I'm asking Kathy.
Yes.
Uh, one thing that you may have read about is the, the changes that the state is making in teacher licensure. And we're looking at that, Bridgette and I just got something from the DPI yesterday, I believe, maybe the day before. And there's a lot of yet to be determined in that document. We know what's gonna happen, they just don't necessarily have the processes and procedures in place to handle any of it yet. So we're, uh, I'm hoping to send something out to our teaching staff early next week that's a little more definitive and we'll provide that to the board as well. But it's pretty groundswell change.
Wow, okay.
This is an administrative through DPI or this is a legislative?
It's a legislative activity. They, they basically changed the licensure requirements.
Okay.
The continuing licensure requirements at the legislative level that the DPI needs to now implement.
And so now DPI is building the administrative rules on how that's going to work.
Correct.
Moving on to action items. Number one, consent agenda. Checks, invoices, receipts for September 2017. Open session meeting minutes, September 14th, 2017. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Right.
Second, Sarah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item two, consideration and action on resolutions accepting gifts.
And once again, our community is very generous to our school district. We have a $60 gift on 21 for families in need from an anonymous donor. We've got $2,987.27 for the 2017-18 freshman football coaching salaries from the Athletic Booster Club. We have the same amount for this year's freshman volleyball and coaching salaries from the Athletic Booster Club. We have $9,800 for two scoreboards for the new gym from the Athletic Booster Club. We have $400 for huddle service for wrestling from the Athletic Booster Club. $1,598 for crossover service for boys and girls basketball from the Athletic Booster Club. And $1,099 for crossover service for volleyball from the Athletic Booster Club. Crossover and huddle are both services that provide video for coaches. And I believe that's it for this month, but again, thank you very much to our community.
I would entertain a motion to accept the.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
This is a resolution, so we'll take a roll call. Julie?
Aye, yes.
Dick?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Mark?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nine yes. Motion carries. Item three, consideration and action on resolution accepting resignations, if, if any, and we do have one this month.
Unfortunately, we have a resignation this month that's in your board packet. Christy Fay, who's been a special ed teacher, uh, in our district for one plus years now. She was a special education teacher at Lone Rock last year. Um, and was transferred to ACE's at Karina Community Elementary School this year, has tendered her resignation. Uh, Lisa, and Jamie, you would like to say anything about Christy?
She's done a great job. We appreciate her being here, but, um, she wants to move back home. So she's going back home, we wish her the best.
She's from the Marshfield area and, and, um, I hired her for that position in Lone Rock last year. She did a great job last year as well. So I just, it's tough to see her go. She's a, she's a good person and does good work with kids, so we wish her the best of luck.
Does this create a hardship with, yeah? Or how are you getting by and, and you?
Well, we posted and we'll probably have to get a substitute in talent if we can find a like, a special ed teacher.
It's a very difficult position to fill, as you're aware at this point in time.
Now, it's gonna be my question, what are our chances of filling this position? Give me a, give me a percentage chance.
Like, like a special ed teacher, like a licensed?
Yes, fully licensed special ed teacher?
I don't know, 2%?
Yeah.
Especially at this, in the middle of the year.
Do liquidated damages apply?
Yes, like we released pending board decision, uh, is $3,000 at this point in time. Christy is aware of that charge.
Great. So it'd be my suggestion, if we do make the motion to accept her resignation, it would be contingent on being liquidated damages. So, if you're thinking about making that motion, take that into consideration.
I'll second that motion. I think that was a good motion.
Thanks for making that motion.
I'll second that.
Uh, this is a resolution, so we'll take a roll call. Dick?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Mark?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nine yes. Motion carries. Consideration and action on hiring, if any.
We do not have any hires at this time?
Item five, consideration and action on policy committee recommendations. We have two policies that are, we're gonna recommend to the board for the second reading. The first one is 345.2 graduation requirements. We did not have any changes when we went through this, through it the second time. We basically just dropped the class number, so we didn't refer to it as a 2017 or 2015, it was more generic. The second item is Policy 187, public participation at board meetings. We reviewed it again and we did not have any changes from when we brought it to the board for the first reading. And basically, we just revamped the policy to clarify our expectations and rules of the public comment in board meetings. And just to clarify, the reason that we don't engage in discussions with the public is because we could be breaking our meeting clause if it's not on the agenda. We just wanted to clear, clear it up so everyone's on, on board and on the same page with what we're doing.
I would like to comment that that is exactly what it is to a earlier public comment, but this is impeding on freedom of speech. It is not. This is part of the parliamentary procedure that the board has to follow in regards to an open meeting so that we provide proper representation and that we are not viewed as making decisions outside of our scheduled agenda. The freedom of, of speech is exactly what the public comment does. And that does not hinder us from engaging in further discussion and agendas down the line.
Thanks, Fred. Just gonna make a similar comment. You did it.
Thank you, very, very welcome.
Are there, any other comments?
Yeah, well, I was the only one to vote against it, so I have, I have some questions. Okay, what is your specific objective to changing this policy?
Which part of it?
Pardon?
Which, was there, was, which part of it?
Well, what is your objective? I mean, it's, it's, uh, there was a, there was quite a bit of rubbage in paper. So, I guess, why are, why are you doing this? And I guess I'll, I'll add to that, convince me that I should vote for it. What, how would we?
Yeah. Go ahead, Fred.
I, I guess, Dan, the reason that you should vote for it is you also took an oath to follow the constitution that govern, and we're, we're representative, public representatives, and this is following parliamentary procedure that we are honor bound to follow.
Okay. Now, the open meeting laws are very vague, okay?
No, they are not.
Yes, they are, they're very vague because open meeting laws, um, are only there so you can make policy. But the thing is, when you make policy, you cannot infringe upon, uh, freedom of speech. If you read that piece of paper.
It's not infringing on, on freedom of speech.
Okay, what you don't understand is that you have a policy to allow input from the public. Once they step in front of that microphone, you actually, at that point, can no longer restrict whatever they wanna say. They can come in here and they can make, they can criticize anyone of us board members.
Yeah, they can.
Okay?
Where do, in the policy, does it restrict anybody from saying anything that they want in front, on that microphone?
Yeah, tell me what paragraph that is.
Please point to the policy exactly.
The timer, we're allowed to set.
That is by, by statute, we are allowed to set a time.
By statute, we're timed set. But when it comes to freedom of speech, this is when your open meeting laws back off, become very vague. Now you have the United States Constitution and the state of Wisconsin constitution that says, when we give that microphone for public input, we can't restrict anything they wanna say. They can criticize anyone in this school for bringing laws that pertains to school.
Please point to the policy where that infringes on their.
Right.
Right to do that.
When we tell them they can't address an individual, okay?
You can't make personal attacks.
For privacy rights.
You cannot make, and, and privacy rights are also protected by constitution. You cannot make personal attacks, that is not.
Not when it comes to that microphone. If you wanna silence all these people, they come here for counseling, they don't come here to be ignored.
That is not counseling, that is taking out a personal vendetta on an individual. And that is not freedom of speech, that is an attack.
Yes, been challenged, and if you read that, that's been challenged. And you can not restrict whatever they say.
Where's the, where's the challenge? Show me the court case that challenges that.
We can eliminate, we can eliminate that if you want to.
We can't eliminate that.
Yes, you can. We do not have to provide public, for public input.
So is that what you're advocating, instead of having a policy?
No, I would be the last person to advocate that.
Okay.
But that's the only way we can keep them from saying what they feel like saying.
Dan, would you point out where in the policy, what is, what specifically is your?